Being to order because of the COVID-19 social distancing recommendations. Our meeting tonight is being held virtually via Zoom. Council members, city staff and myself are all joining remotely. The public is invited to participate by using the instructions included in the city council calendar item listed under the front page of mission KS.org. Public participants will be allowed to make comments through the online chat feature. Please note that comments are visible to the entire group. If you wish to make a public comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Let's begin tonight. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, individual and liberty of all. Audrey, will you please call roll?
Thomas.
Here.
Not here yet. Crane.
Here.
Laura.
Here.
Fulton House.
Here.
Inman.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
And Sash Mocker.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item one, public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight, which is the city stormwater management plan. That plan has been posted to the city's website and has been available for public comment. I would like to open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on the city's stormwater management plan? If so, please note that in the chat feature and we will call on you to speak. Hearing or seeing no comment or discussion, I will formally close the public hearing. Moving on to item number two, special presentations. We do have two proclamations that I would like to share this evening. The first deals with the seven days supportive city proclamation. It recognizes the faith always wins foundation that is working to make a difference against hateful acts through kindness and interfaith dialogue. This year, seven days make a ripple, change the world will be from April 13th to the 25th. During these two weeks, the faith always wins foundation is planning events that promote the importance of kindness, respect and understanding values that our community embraces, not only during these two weeks, but at all times. Their activities, like those of others, have been impacted by COVID-19 and they have transitioned to a virtual event for 2021 as well as well. This proclamation will be shared on social media. Our second proclamation recognizes fair housing month in Mission. This April marks 54 years since the signing of the federal fair housing act. It is important that we recognize and raise awareness of each individual's rights under fair housing. We are committed to equal housing opportunities in our community and I am honored to proclaim April as fair housing month in the city of Mission. Moving item on to item number three in our agenda, issuance of notes and bonds. We do not have any items related to issuance of notes and bonds. So we're moving on to item four consent agenda. Our consent agenda does have three items tonight. Our city councils met, our city council committees met on March 3rd and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. Other items considered by the committees will be presented under committee reports later on in our agenda tonight. If a council member or a member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, first of all, I'd like to recognize that council member R C is joined us. I would like to move that the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed items four A through four B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Flora.
Hi.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Rothrock. Sash Mocker.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
And Davis.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
All right, that concludes the consent agenda. Moving on to item five, public comments. If any member of the public participating via Zoom would like to make a public comment on items that are not included on this agenda, now would be that time. Please submit your comments or questions using the chat feature and remember that your questions are visible to all participating in the Zoom meeting. All right, moving on to item six, action items from planning commission. We don't have any this evening, so we'll move on to our committee reports. First up is council member Crane. Will you please provide a report from the finance and administration committee?
I will. Thank you, mayor. The finance and administration committee met on March 3rd and considered a total of three items. The acceptance of the meeting minutes were approved under the consent agenda and there are two additional items to consider on the regular agenda tonight. Seven A rent mortgage assistance program. City council recognizes the potential impacts of COVID-19 in relation to eviction and foreclosure risks for vulnerable residents due to economic hardships. In an effort to provide support and assistance, a COVID-19 emergency housing relief fund of $15,000 was established during last summer's budget process. Mission has a diverse socio-economic makeup and the city council supported finding a way to help protect our residents, particularly those in multifamily housing from being forced out of their homes and perhaps the city due to an inability to make a rent or mortgage payment. Through conversations with United Community Services, it was suggested that Catholic charities could assist the city with their program implementation. Catholic Charities has a history of experience with rent and mortgage assistance programs and has the ability to connect clients with other emergency services and can aid in supporting property owners and landlords with identifying tenants in need of assistance. Catholic Charities will not collect any administrative fee, which will allow for 100% of the funds to be distributed to Mission residents. With these considerations, staff is now recommending that the city proceed to partner with them to begin identifying eligible participants and distributing the committed funds. Therefore, mayor, I move the city council authorize the city administrator to engage Catholic charities of Northeast Kansas Incorporated to implement and administer the distribution of $15,000 in rent or mortgage assistance funds to Mission residents in accordance with the defined program parameters.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
I just a quick comment.
Yes, Hillary.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Laura for taking this idea and massaging it into a program that I think is going to make a difference for at least a few families here in Mission. And I hope that as we go into the budget process for this next year, we look at how well this works and if it helps meet some needs that we explore, maybe having it be a recurring program. So thank you, Laura.
Anyone else? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Inman.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
And Sash Mocker.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Mayor, our second item deals with racial equity in cities program. The city is committed to continuing anti-bias diversity and inclusion training for the staff and the governing body. We understand that maintaining and enhancing a culture that recognizes the humanity and dignity of every person throughout our community will require focus, dedication and resources that we don't currently have. As part of our continued work surrounding racial equity initiatives, opportunities for education and partnerships were explored with United Community Services. In February, the council heard a presentation from Catherine Evans of Rooted Strategy, who's working with UCS to develop a pilot program called Racial Equity in Cities. The goal of the program is to recruit five to six jurisdictions who will work together with USC and their identified facilitators to accomplish a number of objectives around issues of racial equity, diversity and inclusion. Cohort members will work both individually and collectively to address these issues, to implement training and to build in-house capacity in order to progress forward without the ongoing support of UCS. Staff believes this pilot program provides a structure and effective way to identify and prioritize needs and issues within our specific community and would recommend that Mission join as a member of the program. Therefore, mayor, I move the city council authorize the city to participate in a pilot program coordinated by United Community Services UCS to provide strategic planning, services and technical assistance around issues of diversity, racial equality and inclusion at a cost not to exceed $7,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
I had one statement I'd like to make. I'm excited about this program. I was able to review it and I think that there are great things that can come from this. In our committee meetings, I heard a few times mentioned that we should get in early on this program and it would be best, you know, if we could get in earlier to maybe shape the way we wanted it. And I just wanted to make sure that going forward, we don't really focus on being first or shaping the program to our needs, but just really making sure that the benefits and of everyone in all experiences and walks of life get reviewed. So I just want to make sure that we take that focus from us making this decision and actually putting it into the program.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I would just say probably our next steps. And I will follow up with UCS to see kind of where they are in terms of getting everybody on board. But our next step, you may remember, we'll need to kind of select up to 10 people to participate as a part of kind of the cohort group. And so might want to start thinking about who might be good candidates for that list so that we have an opportunity to look at that and review that and select those people and be ready to go when UCS has got all of their consultants on board.
Yes, Sally.
Yeah, Mayor and Laura, just to that point, I thought, you know, I watched our initial focus group videos that happened in the city and I thought the community members that participated in that were very engaged. So obviously, you know, best to consider everyone, but I think that could be a good place to look to start.
Okay, anybody else? All right, seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Sash Mocker.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
And Flora.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
That concludes my report, mayor. Thank you.
All right, next would be council member Flora. Will you please reply to report on the community development committee?
Yes, thank you, mayor. The community development committee also met on March 3rd and considered two items. These included acceptance of the committee minutes and the public works capital equipment purchases, which were all approved under the consent agenda. There are no additional items for consideration tonight.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item eight, unfinished business. We don't have any. So item nine is new business and we don't have anything on the agenda from that either. So item 10 is comments from the city council. Does anybody have anything they would like to share?
I do, mayor.
Yes, Trent.
I just wanted to let the public know that NLC was held last week in a virtual format and council member Flora and I participated on behalf of Mission. It was a little different this year, just considering everything was done in a virtual format. And so you can imagine, you know, multiple six-hour days plus of Zoom was a little bit of an adjustment, but we ended up still having our virtual Hill Day on Wednesday and we had good meetings with Senator Moran's group and Representative David's group on behalf of Mission. We also had a meeting with Senator Marshall's group. So we'll be kind of thinking more in the weeks and months to come about if there's any items that come from that. But overall, it was a really good session yet again and looking forward to getting to do it again in person. Hopefully, hopefully next year, so.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I had a quick.
Yes, RC.
So the Mission Community Food Pantry last week, we had a successful event again and we served roughly 90 families. And our next event is actually on the 25th at four o'clock at Trinity Lutheran and we hope to see you all there.
Okay, thank you.
I have one comment, mayor.
Yes, Debbie.
Just want to send a shout out to police, fire, everybody who responded so efficiently to the Mission Baptist Church fire. I think they did a wonderful job and it brought a lot of feedback and a lot of positive feedback for Mission, I think, because of how they responded. So I just want to thank them for that.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, not hearing anything further. We'll move on in the agenda to the mayor's report, item 11. This evening, we do have three appointments to consider for two of our commissions. We do really appreciate the service of these community volunteers and we look forward to their contributions and guiding important decisions which have a direct positive impact on our city. So first, I would put before you the appointment of James Tormolin, Ward four, for the Sustainability Commission with the term expiring December 31st, 2022.
Mayor, I move the city council appoint James Tormolin, Ward four, for the Sustainability Commission with the term expiring December 31st, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Sash Mocker.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
And Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
All right, next I put before you the appointments of Amy Warren, Ward two, and Emily Rolheiser, Ward four, for Parks, Recreation and Tree Commission with terms expiring December 31st, 2022.
Mayor, I move that the city council appoint Amy Warren, Ward two, Emily Rolheiser, Ward four, for Parks and Rec and Tree Commission with terms expiring December 31st, 2022.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on this item. Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Inman.
Aye.
Sash Mocker.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
All right, that concludes item 11. Moving on to item 12, Ms. Smith, would you please provide the city administrator's report?
Yes, thank you, mayor. This evening, the February 2021 interim financial reports were included in your packet last Friday. I would just maybe hit a couple of highlights from that. Again, we're obviously very early in the year, but our sales tax collection, both general sales and general use tax continue to perform where we were last year, which we know was ahead of our budget estimates. So that that looks good and looks strong. The one thing that I would mention that I did include, if you didn't have the chance to see it, I know when we were looking at sort of the 2020 year end recap, we had some questions about self-sufficiency or cost recovery with a little bit more of a historical perspective for the community center. And so I have provided that in a table in the executive summary for the last five years. So you can kind of get a sense and we ranged anywhere from high of 85% self-sufficiency or cost recovery back in 2015 to a low based on our unaudited financials, but it should be close of about 31% at the end of 2020. So we had been trending the last couple of years, 2018 and 2019 more and that's 70 to 72% range in terms of self-sufficiency. One of the things that we'll be continuing to watch and keep you all updated on particularly as we go through the budget process is I think everyone's familiar that the American Rescue Plan Act was signed last week, which means that the city of Mission is going to be a direct recipient of federal dollars. We can, I've seen a variety of estimates and I haven't seen the final estimates for our community, but I would estimate that we will have somewhere between maybe one and 1.2, 1.3 million dollars that could be coming to us through that ARP Act. The timing of that is supposed to be the first half of that would be distributed 60 days after enactment. So relatively soon and then the second half would be distributed that same time next year. So the distribution will be spread over two fiscal or two calendar years. Still learning and trying to get familiar with all of the details, but we do know that those funds can be used to replace revenues that were impacted by COVID. And we have until December of 2024 to actually expend those dollars. So we'll have some additional time. It won't be the race to the finish line that we had with the CARES Act funding this past year. And so we'll look forward to kind of keeping you updated with respect to all of that. Happy to answer any other questions if anybody has any questions over anything in the this month's financial report.
Great job, Laura. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then just a couple of things quickly. We are going to, we did get approval from the county for our bunny extravaganza event, which is going to be a pre-registration event only. So unfortunately, I can't invite you all to join us like we would in a typical year. But we're hoping to be able to offer that to families. And I know that Penn and his staff are also offering kind of a at-home concierge opportunity called You've Been Egged, where residents can purchase eggs that our staff will hide in the front yard for their families to find. So kudos to them for finding some fun and exciting ways to try to to build back some of that community, those community events and community spirits. Still on track for the launch of our new website on April 1st. Just a reminder that we will have a work session next Wednesday, the 24th at 6:30 PM. Looking at some recommendations related to our classification and compensation system. And then finally, you may have seen that the Powell Community Center recently opened on Saturdays. So we're starting to expand hours as we see some additional patrons interested in coming back. And then I would note that the walking track will be open starting next Monday, the 22nd by reservation system only. So excited to be able to continue to safely bring back those amenities and services at the community center. And that I think is everything I have this evening, mayor.
All right. All right, then we'll move on to item 13, executive session. And we do have a need for an executive session this evening, which will be a consultation with our city attorney on matters deemed privileged. The governing body and those individuals named in the motion will leave the virtual meeting for a virtual executive session for the allotted time. When that time has expired, the governing body will reconvene to do one of the following. Extend the time required for discussion and return to executive session or continue with our regular legislative meeting. As a reminder to the public, the governing body may take no action in an executive session, no binding action. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council recess to executive session under KSA 75-4319, section B2, consultation with attorney on matters deemed privileged. Also attending the meeting will be city administrator Laura Smith, city attorney Dave Martin and city attorney Michael Sec. The opening, the open meeting will resume virtually via Zoom in 20 minutes at 7:47 PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Right, we are moving to executive session.
Okay, so I'm going to turn my camera off. See you in 20 minutes.
It is seven forty-seven, and we are back in session. Um, before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available uh on our website, missionks.org. There being no further business this evening, I made a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I move to re-adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.